Okay, I'm showing at 5:30. As such, I would like to call the West Fargo Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. And first, I would ask for approval of the order of the agenda. Are there any changes? Would I take a motion to approve the order?
I'll move to approve the order of the agenda.
I'll second.
All right, thanks, Matt and Kathy. We have a motion and a second to approve the order of the agenda. I think this is a voice vote. Legal will correct me if I'm wrong. With that, let's, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Order of the agenda is approved. The next item is the approval of minutes from June 10th. Those are in your packet here. Any comments, questions, changes? Otherwise, I'd take a motion.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes. Again, I believe this is a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, Commissioner membership introduction. Aaron, do you want to take this?
I certainly can. So, we have a new Planning and Zoning Commission member from our extraterritorial area. So, this is just a quick introduction to Morgan Fornes. I don't know if you want to say a few words. If not, that's fine. We invite everybody to stick around maybe after the meeting and just introduce yourselves to our new member here. So, welcome, Morgan.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. And I'm not the troublemaker you think I am.
All right, sounds great. Thank you. Okay, and I guess also just a congratulations to Mr. Gust on his reappointment. I don't see Dave there. Am I missing him, or is Dave with us?
He's gone.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. And for Morgan and everybody else's benefit, I was wishing to be with you in person today, but I've been spending some time trying to establish an office out in Idaho. So, I'm coming to you from sunny and hot, blazy Idaho this afternoon. With that, I think we can jump into the regular agenda. The first item on here has been withdrawn. Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong. We don't really need to take any action on this if it's been withdrawn. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, we'll jump ahead into item number two, which is a public hearing, A 25-17. Cheyenne Second Edition, request for zoning change from R 2 to P for South Elementary School located at 117 Sixth Avenue West and adjacent South Side Playground, Block 35 Cheyenne Second Edition and Lot 1 Block 9 Southdale Edition. Thank you.
Thank you. This application was received in order to rezone South Elementary School and the adjacent playground on the south side of public facilities. The school and playground have been in existence since the early 1950s and are considered permitted uses in the R 2 zoning district. However, the Public Facility Zoning District was adopted in 2000 to create a specific zoning district to promote development, maintenance, use, and identification for land and structures for the city, park, and school districts. The applicant is proposing to rezone the properties to allow for additions onto the school and remodeling and installation of additional playground equipment along the south side and off-street parking. Property owners within 150 feet were notified, as well as applicable agencies and departments. A call was received in support of the rezoning and a call was received requesting additional information. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning on the basis that is consistent with city plans and ordinances. I'm available to answer any questions, as is a representative from the school district. This is a public hearing.
Mr. Thorstad, I wonder if you might be willing to handle some of the local logistics in case there are public comments?
Sure. Are there any questions, Lisa, before we open up the public comment on it? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. If you'd like to address this matter, you can step up the podium, give us your name and address, please, and state your comments. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Third and final call, is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring you back to the commission for any questions, comments, or action.
I'll move to recommend approval.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second? Roll call vote, please.
Chair Dods.
Yes.
Commissioner Sean?
Yes.
Commissioner Amen?
Yes.
Commissioner Fornes?
Yes.
Commissioner Thorstad?
Yes.
Commissioner Kopp?
Yes.
Motion carries. Eric, do you want me to continue on?
Sure, thank you.
Okay, item number three is a public hearing, A 25-19. Galvanizers addition, a request for subdivision at 1001 12th Avenue Northeast. A portion of the southeast corner of the northwest quarter and portion of government Lot 3, all in Section 4, T 139 North, R 49W. Lisa.
Thank you. This application was received in order to subdivide a portion of the, an unplatted parcel for sale in future development. The lot will be sold to an adjacent property to the south, who's along 7th Avenue Northeast. With this plat, 80 feet of right-of-way is being platted for 12th Street Northeast, along with a 30-foot temporary turnaround easement noted on the south side of the street. Although right-of-way is being platted for 12th Street Northeast, there is no intention by the applicant to request public infrastructure improvements for 12th Street Northeast at this time, and it's intended for future development. The submitted area plan shows the potential for a future road lining up with 11th Avenue East on the west side of 9th Street. The area plan is not official. It's been submitted for reference purposes only. In terms of the city subdivision ordinance, the city requires a 5% public dedication for industrial properties. The Park District has indicated there's no need for land within this area, so they are requesting cash in lieu. A public dedication agreement will be needed to outline the terms of the dedication prior to the City Commission approval. Public notices were published in the official newspaper and were sent to applicable agencies and departments. No comments have been received. Staff recommends approval of the proposed subdivision on the basis it is consistent with city plans and ordinances, subject to the condition that a public dedication agreement will be needed to outline the terms and dedication prior to City Commission approval. This is a public hearing. I'm available to answer any questions, as is the applicant.
All right, this is a public hearing. Before we open up the public, are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing or hearing none, we'll open up to the public for comments on this item. Is there any public comment? Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll bring you back to the board for any additional questions or action. Or a motion.
I move to approve.
Got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We got a first and a second? Any additional comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote, please.
Chair Dods.
Yes.
Commissioner Sean?
Yes.
Commissioner Amen?
Yes.
Commissioner Fornes?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thorstad?
Yes.
Commissioner Kopp?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number four is, this is not a public hearing, is it not?
It is not.
Okay. A 25-18, Sterling Industrial Park, 8th Edition, a request for retracement plat at 632 13th Street Northeast, Lot 4, Block 2, Sterling Industrial Park, 1st Edition, and Lot 5, Block 1, Sterling Park Industrial, 2nd Edition. Lisa.
Thank you. This application was received in order to combine two existing parcels and flat them into one lot. Property owners wishing to combine properties which have been previously platted for the purpose of building across lot lines and/or increasing lot area to address district requirements may submit a retracement plat, provided that no additional right-of-way is required or being established. There is no proposed or perceived need for public improvements as a result of the combining of the lots. And the lots to be combined are contiguous and under one ownership. The owner intends to continue to utilize the property for truck parking. A public hearing is not required, though the application must be platted according to the subdivision standards and reviewed by the Planning and Zoning and City Commissions. Notices were sent to applicable agencies and departments. No comments have been received. Staff recommends approval on the basis it is consistent with city plans and ordinances. Again, this isn't a public hearing. I'm available to answer any questions, as is the applicant.
Okay, do we have any questions for Lisa and/or the applicant?
I'm mostly just a little curious how this got plotted this way originally. It's just very oddly.
This was a road access. It was a separate lot, and when this was replatted, that area disappeared.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion on this item.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any additional thoughts, comments? Seeing none, and we'll call for a vote, please.
Chair Dods.
Yes.
Commissioner Sean?
Yes.
Commissioner Amen?
Yes.
Commissioner Fornes?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thorstad?
Yes.
Commissioner Kopp?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, item number five, A 25-16, Bogie, 4th Edition, a request for right-of-way access at 475 12th Avenue Northeast, Lot 1, Block 1, Bogie, 4th Edition. Lisa again.
Thank you. This application was received in order to request that an existing right-in, right-out access be converted into a full access onto a minor arterial roadway. Under Title 2 of the city ordinance, this requires Planning and Zoning Commission approval when there's a request for an access onto arterial and collector roadways. The applicant is requesting removal of the center median along 12th Avenue Northeast to provide for full access for property located along the south side of a minor arterial street. The applicant had originally proposed a three-quarter access, however, due to the lack of median width to accommodate geometry necessary for a three-quarters access, a full access is being proposed. Staff has reviewed the request, which meets minimum spacing requirements, as currently outlined within the subdivision ordinance. While staff does not have any concerns with the removal of the median to allow full access at this time, future traffic volumes and conditions may warrant reinstallation of the raised median at some point in the future. As such, staff recommends that approval of the applicant's request be conditioned on the following. The applicant waives the right to protest any future decision by the city to reinstall the raised median and/or otherwise restrict access if conditions warrant. The applicant waives the right to protest any costs for such improvements that may be assessed in accordance with the city's infrastructure funding policy. Any costs associated with the removal of the median will be the responsibility of the applicant. Only that portion of the median located across from and east of the existing driveway would be removed. At least 100 feet of raised median will remain on the east side of the adjacent railroad crossing. As such, or all such work is required to be completed by a contractor licensed with the city of West Fargo and will require review and approval of a right-of-way permit by the City Engineering Department. Notices were sent to applicable agencies, departments, and no comments were received. Staff recommends approval subject to the following. That the applicant enters into an agreement with the city in which the applicant waives the right to protest any future decision by the city to reinstall the raised median and/or to otherwise restrict access if conditions warrant, and waives the right to protest any costs for such improvements that may be assessed in accordance with the city's infrastructure funding policy. This is not a public hearing. Engineering's available to answer any questions. I do not believe the applicant is here.
Okay, do we have any questions for Lisa or staff?
I have one maybe minor question, Lisa. In the recommendation points, it talks about the applicant enters into an agreement for sort of future costs to reinstall the median and waiving any future protests. But it doesn't specifically talk about having the applicant pay for the removal cost, which is noted above. Just wanted to clarify that this removal cost will be done by the applicant as well. Is that correct?
Yes, the, will be as well. And the agreement will be recorded against the property and will be signed by the applicant and the city.
Thanks.
You have any other questions, Eric?
No, thank you.
I've got a question. Is this railroad crossing, is that a whistle-free crossing now?
I don't believe so.
It's not? Okay. I know years ago, we checked them. If it's not, then I'm fine with doing this. But I know BNSF discussions I had years ago with them when we're looking at the 9th Street, as long as you put a median in and you had the arms down, they, they were, at that time, agreed to whistle-free zone. So, I don't know, if this isn't set up for it, then it's not an issue. But if we cut into that median, is that going to violate BNSF standards?
That's a great quest, great question, Commissioner. One of the things we're looking at with the work is we'd like to preserve enough length. Should we, at some time in the future, want to proceed with a quiet zone, we'd like to make sure we have enough length of the median to remain. And that's, that's one of the things we're looking at, and we'll, we'll likely be reviewed with the right-of-way permit when they apply to, to conduct the work.
So, right now, it's not, it's not a whistle-free zone?
I'm, I haven't explicitly gone out and looked at this one, but in the discussions that we had with the design team, you know, we did have quite a bit of dialogue, because that was one of our big concerns. You know, if it is a quiet zone, we don't want to revert back to what it once was. But we can certainly verify before the work is conducted as to whether it is. And like I said, we're looking to preserve enough length of that raised median, so that should we look to pursue it someday, that we, we will still have it.
Good.
Great question.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, I guess I'd entertain a motion on it.
I'll move to recommend approval with the conditions specified.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote on this, please.
Chair Dods.
Yes.
Commissioner Sean?
Yes.
Commissioner Amen?
Yes.
Commissioner Fornes?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thorstad?
Yes.
Commissioner Kopp?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all for the regular agenda. Are there any non-agenda items? Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, just one quick one. So, a couple of months ago at our last meeting, some of you may recall, staff had introduced the topic of putting together a public comment policy in accordance with some of the new North Dakota legislation. However, since that time, staff has received some additional guidance from the North Dakota League of Cities specifying that that requirement is specific to the elected bodies of the city, not required for appointed bodies of the city. And so, at this time, staff is not looking to bring forward, or no longer looking to bring forward, a specific policy for planning and zoning. That is something we could certainly revisit in the future if the Planning and Zoning Commission would like to do so, or if, you know, their staff, or there is ever a need in the future. So, just wanted to provide that update.
Good, thank you. Okay, any other non-agenda items? Seeing none, I guess I'd ask for an adjournment, motion?
I move to adjourn.
A motion is second?
Second.
All in favor, signalify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move on to the additional item, which is just a discussion item. Proposed revisions to Title 4 regarding landscaping. Aaron.
All right, thank you. So, for this item, this discussion item, staff will be looking forward, or looking to bring forward, a text amendment potentially next month to revise the landscaping ordinance. And so, we wanted to bring this forward as a discussion item here tonight to introduce the topic, provide you an overview of what we're looking to do, and then have any discussion or receive any comments or feedback from the Planning and Zoning Commission at this time that we could work into those amendments. So, just to start with a little bit of background on why we're bringing this forward, this is specific to a request that a property owner along the interstate brought forward. So, the city recently platted and rezoned a lot of property just north of the interstate within the Sand Hills Industrial Park, just west of 26th Street Northwest there. And so, that area is zoned light industrial, and we have a new user to town that's looking to develop, well, they own two of those lots, looking to develop one lot today with plans for future expansion, once their business is kind of up and running in the next few years here. And so, they had some reservations about the amount of landscaping that we were requiring along the interstate there. The way that our landscaping ordinance is structured right now is we essentially have three different tiers of general-purpose landscaping that we refer to as open-space landscaping. And the top tier is anything within an overlay zoning district, which includes our interstate overlay, is, falls into that top tier, which requires the most amount of landscaping. Outside of the overlay zoning districts, industrial-based zoning districts, like the limited industrial district, would fall into that lowest tier of landscaping, requiring the least amount of landscaping. And so, this is a somewhat unique situation in which we have an industrial district adjacent to the interstate, and it is within that overlay. And so, as a result, it goes from the bottom tier into the top tier and requires quite a bit of landscaping for an industrial property. And so, you know, some of the points brought up is, you know, typically with industrial properties, there's a lot of large buildings for one, and then outdoor storage yards and just a lot of, you know, paved surface or even gravel, lay-down yards and things that don't allow a lot of additional space for landscaping, nor is it especially common to have, you know, robust landscaping requirements in industrial areas. And so, staff tends to agree with the concerns raised, and so, through some internal conversations, we're looking to bring this forward for the main purpose of providing a little bit more gradation, if you will, of those different landscaping classifications, specifically in relation to the industrial districts. In addition to that, we're also playing around with some slight tweaks to the other aspects of the landscaping ordinance. As you recall, the, within the, probably a little over a year ago now, we made some pretty big changes to our landscaping ordinance with the, you know, expectation that we would probably be having to do some fine-tuning over time. So, now that we have a year's worth of kind of use under our belt, staff's identified some things that we'd just like to make some clarifications on. Kind of the overarching intent with all of these is to provide additional flexibility and clarity is kind of the two overarching goals that we're kind of keeping in mind as we're bringing these forward. So, with that, I'll maybe just run through the red-line version that's included in your packet here, just to give you a sense of what these actually look like in the ordinance. So, I'll start with the open-space landscaping here. Like I mentioned already, we have these three different classifications of open-space landscaping. The specific changes we're looking to make is to basically pull out the overlay references from that top tier. Instead of having three tiers, we'll have four tiers. The fourth tier will be specific to the overlay districts, and it'll be basically adding one additional plant unit for the three tiers. It's kind of hard to explain here, just verbally, but in essence, we'll have kind of three tiers that regulate the base zoning districts, and then one tier that regulates the overlay districts, and essentially just adds an additional requirement on top of those base requirements is how we're intending to structure that. Other minor tweaks, removing the location requirements, again, just to provide some flexibility for owners, site designers, have a little bit more flexibility with where they actually place the landscaping. For parking lot perimeter landscaping, one of the things that we did with the newer ordinance was try to create, try to define, I guess, what was required in terms of the landscaping required between parking lots and streets when parking lots are located within proximity to public rights of way. The previous version of the landscape ordinance was very vague and did not provide much specification on what type of landscaping was required. And so, this table was intended to kind of provide some options for folks, but in essence, staff feels it's a little bit maybe too rigid, and so, maybe perhaps a happy medium would just be to, again, rely on these plant unit equivalencies that are discussed in the landscaping ordinance, and just require a set minimum number of plant units per linear footage of parking lot that's within proximity to a street. So, as long as you meet the equivalent numbers, developers and site designers can have flexibility to place, you know, the type of landscaping that they'd like within that area. So, again, that's the, just intending to provide more flexibility in the design of a site. Some minor updates to the graphics, just to provide some clarity in how the landscape islands are required is what that's all about. Adding a little section here about instances where landscape islands within parking lots, when they have light poles, or if folks are wanting to utilize those spaces for stormwater detention, for example, we're not going to require trees in there. We'll provide you some flexibility, allow you to put shrubs or perennials in there in lieu of a tree. So, again, more on, more of a flexibility change we're making there. And then the last thing I'll highlight is just the buffer yards. I will say, we're continuing, continuing to struggle a little bit with providing more clarity on this one. It's, there's just a lot of different scenarios and situations to think through when it comes to when and where buffer yards are required. And so, the overall intent here is just to provide better clarity on when and where buffer yards are required. The, some of the tweaks here are just simplifying the language we're using when we're talking about residential zoning districts. One of the changes we're looking to make is to remove any requirement for buffer yards between industrial and commercial properties, which is currently in there. The reason there is that, you know, take Main Avenue corridor, for example, there's a mixture of heavy commercial and light industrial, and heavy industrial districts, I believe, along Main Avenue. There's quite a bit of overlap between those, the uses allowed. You can have, you know, light industrial uses are permitted as conditional uses in commercial districts, for example, and vice versa, where you have perhaps some more commercial uses that are allowable within industrial districts. And so, staff just didn't really feel the need to require any sort of buffering between industrial and commercial. The main, so the main The main, so the main focus going forward is going to be, it's really residential protection buffer is what it is. So, buffers are only required in cases where we have non-residential or high-density residential next to low-density residential, or any sort of commercial, industrial, non-residential-type use adjacent to a residential use or residential zoning district. So, again, just trying to specify that a little more clearly. Remove that, removing buffering requirements between commercial and industrial is the main intent here. And then in the table too, that's, some of this is a little repetitive. And so, I think we're going to continue to try and massage this and hopefully have a more clear, more clear recommended amendments when we bring this forward here next month. So, that's a high-level overview. Certainly happy to answer any questions or take any feedback that the commission may have.
Question, on the parking lot, industrial parking lot. Do you have a definition of what a parking lot is? Because it could be, an industrial site could have parking that's for employees.
Yep.
You could have a trucking company in an industrial park that has tractor-trailers and a huge lot staging, or, you know, they're parked waiting for the next load. So if you have an industrial site, do you have to put those trees all the way around? The big, if you have, like tractor-trailers?
Mm-hmm.
But if you just have a parking lot for employees, and let's say you have a storage lot, finished product coming out and you're stacking it out there, that, that doesn't qualify?
Yep. That's a good question. And we do have probably, oops, probably partially, a partial definition of what your, you know, the scenario that you outlined there. I'll see if I can pull it up here really quick while I'm talking. So, within the ordinance, we talk about parking in vehicular circulation areas. And so the intent is that any, you know, including, you know, a driveway for a fast-food restaurant or something, or a driveline, that would be included as a situation where if it's within 30 feet of the public right-of-way, there's still going to be the requirement for some type of plantings between the paved surface and the right-of-way. In a scenario like you outlined there with, you know, a storage yard, that's where it gets a little more gray, and that's where perhaps we can try and work in a better definition to, you know, to specify that. There is a separate section of code that talks about screening requirements for outdoor storage yards and, like, garbage and trash collection areas. Typically, those are required to be screened from view of the public right-of-way or screened from view from a residential zoning district. However, there is some exemptions for industrial areas. And so I think there is, like I said, it, there's a lot of different, you know, situations and scenarios that we want to be thinking through. So that's one that we're going to have to give a little more thought to. But the intention is right now that...
I think it'd just be, if you had a little more clarity on it, so a guy, you know, a big trucking company's coming in, I'd like to see trees all the way around, it'd look nice.
Mm-hmm.
But they may not agree that they want to put that much money into landscaping and/or maintain it, so.
Yep.
Just so there's a little clarity, so they know what they must do.
Yep.
And the rest, you know, may or may not be required.
Yep. So the intent is something like a parking area, even if it's for trailers or tractor-trailers, the intent is that, yes, that would require the buffering. I think where it starts to get a little gray is, you know, just outdoor storage yards, where it's primarily, you know, equipment that's being stored outdoors, but you do have vehicles going back there to access the storage areas or to...
Yeah, it could be a finished product, like, they're building tractors and they're parking tractors out there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they're hauled out eventually, or, you know, muddied out, but I just want to make it so if someone's planting industrial plant, they know exactly what their requirements are.
Yep. That's a good point, and something that we'll think through a little more. The other thing I'll note there too is that we do have language in here. I can try and find it here again while I'm talking, but where we talk about, in no case shall the parking lot perimeter landscaping, you know, if the number of plant units happens to be more than the open-space plant units, the number will default to the lower number. And so, there could be a case in an industrial area, especially, where, you know, based on the shape and size of the lot, maybe it's a very wide lot with a lot of street frontage, the number of required parking lot perimeter landscaping plant units ends up being higher than the general open-space landscaping plant units. It would default to the lower number of the two. Any plants that are used for the parking lot perimeter landscaping can be counted towards your open-space landscaping. So same with the parking lot island landscaping. Those all count towards the open-space total, so.
Okay, good. Any other questions on this, or?
Aaron, maybe more of a general question about the Sandhills area, just in general. Are you getting a lot of development interest out there? Or what's the, what's the status, if you can share anything?
Yeah, we are, and, you know, it's partially probably a question for our economic development department. I know they've, that team has been in conversations with a few folks that are potentially interested in coming to town. But yeah, there's a steel company which is locating along the interstate there. We had a pre-development meeting not too long ago with some property owners to the west that are interested in plating and rezoning some additional land up in that area for development as well, so. Yeah, it's a relatively active area for our community.
Anything else, anybody? Anything else, Aaron, or is that it?
Well, that's what I've got, so.
Right.
I'll just, one final note is, if you think of something after the meeting, don't hesitate to reach out. Like I said, we're going to be working to, you know, refine this further between now and the next meeting, so. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and thank you, everybody. And we're already adjourned, so unless you want to talk about something else, we can leave.
Thanks, Mike, appreciate it.
Come back soon, Eric.